And we have one last surprise for you. Woo! All my materials rocks!
Best use of technology. This is given out from our information technologies department. Vainiquet of HP notebook.
Translate what I am saying in Spanish. And if you need headphones to listen to him in Spanish for the translation, see this lovely lady that's waving in the back. That's where the headphones are.
Buenas noches, padres, tutors, and invitados. Este, mi nombre es Jose Reyes, y soy orgullosamente el intérprete de las reuniones de la mesa directiva de Rialto. Y yo voy a interpretar todo lo que la señorita Joffrey diga. Bueno, voy a procurar, eh. Vamos a ver cómo sale.
Our school board meeting will begin at 7 o'clock or close to 7 o'clock when the Board of Education, which is five members, and the superintendent come out of closed session. Um, just to let you know that when they do, we just ask, um, if you can silence your cell phones or shut them off. I just silence them so you can take all the pictures you want while you're sitting down.
La reunión iniciará como a eso de las siete de la noche justo cuando salgan los cinco fide y comisarios de esa puerta, lo mismo que el superintendente. And I got my phone again. Yeah, I'm like... Los teléfonos, punky. By the way, I did that on purpose, because the next thing... Para mencionar el... ...los teléfonos una vez que iniciemos la reunión, como es una reunión que se transmite en vivo, les pedimos, por favor, que silencien sus teléfonos o que lo pongan en vibrador.
We would love you to take any pictures that you would like sitting down of our students. Uh, we will take one professional shot and make sure that we send that to your principals so they can get that over to them. We will also promote them on social media, Twitter, Facebook, if you're not, if you're, if you're moms, if you're already happy.
And open up our new playground structure to our students, to you. One, two, three! Woo! All my materials rocks!
Best use of technology. This is given out from our information technologies department. Vainiquet of HP notebook.
And open up our new playground structure to our students, to you. One, two, three! Woo! All my materials rocks!
Best use of technology. This is given out from our information technologies department. Vainiquet of HP notebook.
And open up our new playground structure to our students, to you. One, two, three! Woo! All my materials rocks!
Best use of technology. This is given out from our information technologies department. Vainiquet of HP notebook.
And open up our new playground structure to our students, to you. One, two, three! Woo! All my materials rocks!
Best use of technology. This is given out from our information technologies department. Vainiquet of HP notebook.
And open up our new playground structure to our students, to you. One, two, three! Woo! All my materials rocks!
Best use of technology. This is given out from our information technologies department. Vainiquet of HP notebook.
And open up our new playground structure to our students, to you. One, two, three! Woo! All my materials rocks!
Best use of technology. This is given out from our information technologies department. Vainiquet of HP notebook.
And open up our new playground structure to our students, to you. One, two, three! Woo! All my materials rocks!
Best use of technology. This is given out from our information technologies department. Vainiquet of HP notebook.
And open up our new playground structure to our students, to you. One, two, three! Woo! All my materials rocks!
Best use of technology. This is given out from our information technologies department. Vainiquet of HP notebook.
And open up our new playground structure to our students, to you. One, two, three! Woo! All my materials rocks!
Best use of technology. This is given out from our information technologies department. Vainiquet of HP notebook.
And open up our new playground structure to our students, to you. One, two, three! Woo! All my materials rocks!
Best use of technology. This is given out from our information technologies department. Vainiquet of HP notebook.
And open up our new playground structure to our students, to you. One, two, three! Woo! All my materials rocks!
Best use of technology. This is given out from our information technologies department. Vainiquet of HP notebook.
And open up our new playground structure to our students, to you. One, two, three! Woo! All my materials rocks!
Best use of technology. This is given out from our information technologies department. Vainiquet of HP notebook.
And open up our new playground structure to our students, to you. One, two, three! Woo! All my materials rocks!
Best use of technology. This is given out from our information technologies department. Vainiquet of HP notebook.
And open up our new playground structure to our students, to you. One, two, three! Woo! All my materials rocks!
Best use of technology. This is given out from our information technologies department. Vainiquet of HP notebook.
And open up our new playground structure to our students, to you. One, two, three! Woo! All my materials rocks!
Best use of technology. This is given out from our information technologies department. Vainiquet of HP notebook.
And open up our new playground structure to our students, to you. One, two, three! Woo! All my materials rocks!
Best use of technology. This is given out from our information technologies department. Vainiquet of HP notebook.
And open up our new playground structure to our students, to you. One, two, three! Woo! All my materials rocks!
Best use of technology. This is given out from our information technologies department. Vainiquet of HP notebook.
And open up our new playground structure to our students, to you. One, two, three! Woo! All my materials rocks!
Best use of technology. This is given out from our information technologies department. Vainiquet of HP notebook.
And open up our new playground structure to our students, to you. One, two, three! Woo! All my materials rocks!
Best use of technology. This is given out from our information technologies department. Vainiquet of HP notebook.
And open up our new playground structure to our students, to you. One, two, three! Woo! All my materials rocks!
Best use of technology. This is given out from our information technologies department. Vainiquet of HP notebook.
And open up our new playground structure to our students, to you. One, two, three! Woo! All my materials rocks!
Best use of technology. This is given out from our information technologies department. Vainiquet of HP notebook.
And open up our new playground structure to our students, to you. One, two, three! Woo! All my materials rocks!
Best use of technology. This is given out from our information technologies department. Vainiquet of HP notebook.
And open up our new playground structure to our students, to you. One, two, three!
Mr. Ayala, CSCA.
CSCA.
Linda.
Oh, yeah.
I'm not addicted to Linda.
She gave those here.
Maybe it was just Linda. One minute. Okay, here we go. Call to order. Okay, let's see. Adjournment of closed session. I need a motion in a second from the board, please.
Move to adjourn closed session?
Second.
Thank you. Vote by board members?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, aye. Um, open session reconvenes at 7:00 PM. And we begin with the pledge. Tonight, we have a presentation by Carter High School Choir. There it is. Tonight, we have a presentation by Carter High School Choir, led by choir director Ms. Susan Barnes. But first, let's have Carter High School junior Ethan Barnes lead us in the pledge. Ethan?
For the audience, please rise. Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. Raise your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ethan. Um, now Carter Choir will perform, I hope I don't butcher this too badly, Kawawu Wanjipi. A Swahili song with percussion instrument accompaniment. We would like to thank our... Nope, here we go. Ms. Barnes.
Mm-hmm. All right, Kawawu Wanjipi. This is a Swahili song for, uh, thank you for the rain. Uh, you have given us rain and we thank you.
Kawawu Wanjipi, erokamano, wolo lore. Kawawu Wanjipi, erokamano, wamora inya. Niyo Wanjipi, erokamano, wolo lore. Niyo Wanjipi, erokamano, wamora inya. Kawawu Wanjipi, erokamano, wolo lore. Kawawu Wanjipi, erokamano, wamora inya. Niyo Wanjipi, erokamano, wolo lore. Niyo Wanjipi, erokamano, wamora inya. Niyo Wanjipi, erokamano, wolo lore. Niyo Wanjipi, erokamano, wamora inya. Kawawu Wanjipi, erokamano, wolo lore. Niyo Wanjipi, erokamano, wamora inya. Kawawu Wanjipi, erokamano, wolo lore. Kawawu Wanjipi, erokamano, wamora inya. Niyo Wanjipi, erokamano, wolo lore. Niyo Wanjipi, erokamano, wamora inya. Kawawu Wanjipi, erokamano, wolo lore. Kawawu Wanjipi, erokamano, wamora inya. Niyo Wanjipi, erokamano, wolo lore. Niyo Wanjipi, erokamano, wamora inya. Kawawu Wanjipi, erokamano, wolo lore. Kawawu Wanjipi, erokamano, wamora inya. Kawawu Wanjipi, erokamano, wolo lore. Kawawu Wanjipi, erokamano, wamora inya. Kawawu Wanjipi, erokamano, wolo lore. Kawawu Wanjipi, erokamano, wamora inya. Kawawu Wanjipi, erokamano, wolo lore. Kawawu Wanjipi, erokamano, wamora inya. Kawawu Wanjipi, erokamano, wolo lore. Kawawu Wanjipi, erokamano, wamora inya. You bring us rain, rain, rain. Rivers and rain, rain, rain. Rivers and rain, erokamano, wamora inya. Kawawu Wanjipi, erokamano, wolo lore. Kawawu Wanjipi, erokamano, wamora inya. Kawawu Wanjipi, erokamano, wolo lore. Kawawu Wanjipi, erokamano, wamora inya. Kawawu Wanjipi, erokamano, wamora inya. Kawawu Wanjipi, erokamano, wamora inya. Woo!
We would like to thank our parents, guardians, and our Carter staff for being here tonight to support our students' talents and success. I enjoyed that a lot. I was waiting for the cowbell solo. Okay, Dr. Avila, report out of closed session, please.
We have none.
Thank you. Okay, board adoption of the agenda. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Preferential vote by student board member?
Aye.
Thank you. Vote by board members?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, presentations. High School District Student Advisory Committee?
Eisenhower is unable to make it tonight, but...
Into the microphone, please.
I'm sorry. Eisenhower is unable to make it tonight, but we will proceed with the other high schools. First, we have Rialto High School from Adriana Magaña.
Welcome.
Hello. Well, before I start, I want to give you guys something.
Thank you.
Ms. Walker?
Aww.
Sorry, y'all.
Thank you. Oh, thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, Honorable Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Avila, and viewing audience. My name is Adriana Magaña, and I am the proud ASB president of Rialto High School. Winter is in full swing at Rialto High School, with all of our winter sports making playoffs. That's right. Our boys' basketball team earned their fourth consecutive San Andreas League title and went undefeated in league play. They are hosting a game at home right now, actually, for the first round. Girls' soccer will play at Gary tomorrow, and our girls' basketball will host Sagis High School as well. Finally, boys' soccer will travel to Ramona High on Friday. Our Lady Knights' cheer continues to dominate as they brought home their third Best of the West title and will represent Rialto High and the city of Rialto at the USA Nationals competition on February 23rd. Go Knights! Our Knights are not only succeeding on the field, but also in the classroom. We had a great one-day mid-cycle WASP visit, and the team congratulated us on the following: Growth in our UCA through G rates, implementing PBIS school-wide, increase of students taking A through G courses, increase in EL student reclassification, increase in our CTE pathways courses. Please join me in congratulating freshman Hannah Singh for being named the RINs Avid Regional Winner for the Avid Write-Off. Hannah will be honored at the Avid Write-Off ceremony held on March 1st. Great job, Hannah. Our academic decathlon team recently represented Rialto High at the annual competition held at Redlands East Valley. We are excited to announce that the team placed ninth overall out of 41 teams, and the second in the speech category. Congratulations also goes out to Gordon Hill for earning first place in speech and third in essay, and to Andrew Rivas for earning third place in both science and interview. Great job to all our Academia scholars and Mr. Answerment. Congratulations to our 2018 Girls' State Delegate Janine Keys. Great job, Janine. I'm excited to inform you all of some great upcoming events. We will be celebrating our 20th year of hosting elementary schools for the Read Across America event on March 2nd. Last year, our school welcomed more than 25 second-grade classes to participate in Dr. Seuss-themed activities, and our Knights traveled out to schools as well to share their love of reading. We are also preparing for our 25th anniversary time capsule presentation and reception for April 18th. Before I end, I wanted to take a moment to send my thoughts and prayers to the families in Florida. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to seeing you on our campus and at our events. Have a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy Valentine's Day.
They're having their 25th anniversary. Second, from Myler High School, we have Leslie Vargas.
Welcome.
First off, I want to say, um, I'm a little sick right now, so forgive my raspy voice. Good evening, Honorable Board of Education, District Administrators, Superintendent Dr. Avila, and viewing public. First off, I want to say Happy Valentine's Day to everyone here. I'm actually surprised this many people showed up, being that it's Valentine's Day. My name is Leslie Vargas. I am ASB secretary for Myler High School. It is an honor to be here tonight to share with you all the exciting things happening at Myler and Zupanic High Schools. Today, Valentine grounds were sold for 50 cents each, and we sold a total of 55. Our basketball team is 4-3, in which our board member Eric and ASB president Ryan are members of. Our blood drive will be held on February 27th from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. We would love to have you guys stop by and see, um, all the progress we made. We had our first school-site council meeting January 25th, and our next meeting will take place on February 22 at 1:30 PM. Next quarter, we will be starting a boys' and girls' soccer team. At this time last year, only 24 Apex courses were completed. To date this year, we currently have 86 completed, so that's a 75% increase from last year. Last Friday, we also conducted the ASFAB test, which is, um, for the students who would be interested in joining the military. And currently, we're taking several field trips. Next Friday, we will be going to San Bernardino Valley College for a Black Excellence Educational Summit. April 18th, we are again going to San Bernardino Valley College for a Wolverine showcase. So those are the only two we have so far. April 20th is Senior Day in honor of all seniors. March 10th, we will be having a pharmacy camp at the KEG Graduate Institute in Claremont. February 21, a guest speaker from Long Island University will be coming in to speak to students interested in a career in the medical field. So currently, we have, um, a family of feral cats living on our campus. So, we did research, and we found out that it's against the law to remove them. So with that said, we contacted a local rescue, and we raised the money, and, um, we took them to, um, a pet clinic, and we had them spayed and neutered. So they are currently back with us, living with us, and they're a happy family. And thankfully, they will not reproduce anymore. So, um, four students have submitted to be considered, um, valley-bound for a scholarship that will pay for the whole year, including books and supplies. Um, April 10th, we will have a college and career day. We already have three junior colleges that have already confirmed they will be showing up. And to date, we currently have 63 Myler graduates and 18 from Zupanic. So that brings the total to 81 this year so far, and we still have one more quarter to go. So with that said, we contacted a local rescue, and we raised the money, and we took them to a pet clinic, and we had them spayed and neutered. So they are currently back with us, living with us, and they're a happy family. And thankfully, they will not reproduce anymore. So four students have submitted to be considered valley-bound for a scholarship that will pay for the whole year, including books and supplies. April 10, we will have a college and career day. We already have three junior colleges that have already confirmed they will be showing up. And to date, we currently have 63 Myler graduates and 18 from Zupanic. So that brings the total to 81 this year so far, and we still have one more quarter to go. And that is it for now. We would love to have you guys come one day, so you guys can see all the progress we're having. Thank you.
Next, from Carter High School, we have Kashmila Ali.
Good evening, Honorable Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Avila, and being set up. So they're like super close to my face. All right, I'm Kashmila Ali, the ASB President at Carter High School. So I'm just going to talk about what's been going on at Carter lately. So we just had our Young Men's Leadership Conference on Saturday, on Saturday, December 9th, and it was an awesome event. We had 100 young men take part, and we also had Justice Hal Hamilton and Dylan take part of it, and they were part of our DSAC committee, so it was pretty awesome. And we also had our National Signing Day at Carter High School. We had Le Musu sign at Sacramento State, Wayne Schwester, sorry, sign at Azusa Pacific, and our softball star Jacqueline Gonzalez signed at Ottawa University, which is awesome, so yay! And then we had Wrestling win a CBL title after completing the regular season. At 18 wins and one loss, the Carter Lions were seeded number three in the CIF Eastern Division Dual Meet at Corona Santiago High School. So Carter Wrestling finished as a CIF runner-up, and now with the boys will journey to the CIF Wrestling Championship. So we can't wait for that. And we are also having a Carter E-Ways fundraiser drive, and it's set for Saturday and Sunday, March 3rd and 4th. And so it will be in the north, Carter High School lot, with a truck from 8:30 to 4:30 each day. And we also had boys' soccer coach Navarro earn his 100th victory at Carter, and he's a soccer coach, so boo! Then we had our staff rival game versus Ike Eisenhower, and it was awesome! The crowd was all rallied up, and it was a great spirit, and no one got hurt. So it was great, it was awesome. And we also had our Carter Book Fair, and that was January 22nd to the 27th. And everyone just came together, and we just wanted to advertise more people to say, oh, you need to start reading more, and everyone purchased a lot more reading material. And it's just a great way to start getting people to get more interested in read with the generation of technology. So next, we have Carter High School's Jacqueline Quintilla, and she was selected as runner-up for San Bernardino County Poetry Out Loud. So congratulations, Jacqueline. And we also had our girls' basketball team, and they made it to CIF playoffs, and they will face Palms High School tomorrow night. We also have our Carter's Boys' Soccer, and they made it to CIF playoffs, and this will be their first-round match at home on Friday night. So hopefully, some of you can be there. And we will also be celebrating Black History Month, and we have an assembly tomorrow. And it's one of the things that I really look forward to, because we get to go back and just see a part of the United States history that a lot of people in the, there are states in the United States that actually choose to neglect it. And I think Carter does a great way of presenting our black history and celebrate it, and all the individuals who have made this country great. And also, we are having an I Am Beautiful pageant, which is great, and that's going to be in March for Women's History Month. And it's just, we just want to empower women now at school, and we want to show women, hey, we can do anything that a man can. And I just, it's just, we want to empower women at our school. And it would be great if you can come and check that out. It'll be sometime in March. We're getting the details smoothed over. But it's going to be great, and I know it's going to be great. So really fast, I just wanted to say, okay, I'm really excited to say this. I've been practicing to say this all day. So I am proud to announce the valedictorian and salutatorian at Carter High School. The salutatorian is Lisette Rodriguez, and I am blessed to say that I'm the valedictorian at Carter High School. So today at DSAC, we talked about failure, and that really hit me, because I didn't think I could become valedictorian. So I was in ninth grade, I think it was the first week of school. I walked into the head counselor's room, and I was like, I want to be valedictorian. How do I do that? It was something I wanted. And he gave me a sheet, and he's like, you just need to get as many As as possible. So in 10th grade, I got a B. I went out of the country, and I came back two weeks late. Two weeks into the second semester, and I got a B, and I cried, and I cried, and I cried, and I was like, I suck. But it's what failure, that's what failure was to me then, to me then, when I was a 10th grader. Now I'm just like, no, that's not what failure is. Failure is failure. And, but, and then today, Ms. Shawna said that, you know, when you get lemon, you make it into chocolate cake, and I feel like I did that. I stood up, and I was like, I'm not going to let this B take me down. And in eighth grade, there was a valedictorian speech. I went to go watch my cousin and a family friend for their graduation, and she was a valedictorian, and she had the highest GPA that Carter had ever seen. And I was like, Mom, that's going to be me, and I am. And I'm proud to say that Mr. Wilson, the head counselor, told me that I got, on my transcript, one of the most As he's ever seen. So I beat her. In a good way. But yeah, I just wanted to say that one letdown isn't the end of the world, but that taught me that I need to become more competitive, and that as much as I love everyone, but it's about getting ahead in life and seizing the opportunities. So thank you so much for letting me talk today, and Happy Valentine's Day!
That is all. Eisenhower.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Herrera. Okay, District Science and Engineering Fair, top student winners. I've asked Mr. Montez to present that.
Thank you, Board President, Mr. Martinez. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Let me first begin by apologizing to all of you today for us scheduling a board meeting on Valentine's Day. I don't know how we overlooked that. A big apology to my wife at home.
Hi, honey.
Second and fourth Wednesdays of every month. No matter what.
Yeah, but we approve the calendar.
That's true.
We hardly ever overlook things, anyway. I want to first congratulate all of the students that participated in the District Science Fair, Science and Engineering Fair on January 31st, held from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Carter High School Theater Hall. The Science Fair was open to all students, including our special education and English learners. All students were encouraged to participate in the District Science Fair. Hundreds of family members and staff, including teachers and administrators, attended to cheer our students' successes. Our student scientists, from kindergarten to 12th grade, explored and solved various problems using the scientific method. Problems such as which fluffy slime stretches the most, a battery that make scents, and the effect of trash on aquatic plants were explored. Today, we will honor these six stellar scientists who seized the top scores in each of their categories. Students from grades four through grade 12 will be moving forward to the San Bernardino Inyo Mono Science and Engineering Fair, which will be held on April 3rd, 2018, at the Fontana Auto Speedway. Congratulations to all of our winners and to all of the participants. Now, the top five sweepstakes winners from the Science Fair are... The first student from Cove Middle School, Nikita Serrano. Next, student from Carter High School, Itzel Martinez. Up next, student from Dahlahan Elementary School, Alessandra Estrada. Next, student from Fitzgerald Elementary School, Dominic Ortega. And last but not least, student from Warner Elementary School, Oscar Vera. And Principal Mrs. Roman will accept it on his behalf. Congratulations.
The board is always so proud of all these students. Real blessing to see them all. Okay, we come to public comments. Public comments from the floor. At this time, any person wishing to speak on any item not on the agenda will be granted three minutes. Dr. Avila?
We have none.
Okay, public comments on agenda items. Any person wishing to speak on any item on the agenda will be granted three minutes.
We have none.
Okay. Comments from Association Executive Board members. REA? Here she comes, Rialto Education Association.
Good evening, President Martinez, school board members, Dr. Avila, cabinet. My name is Leslie Chambers. I am the Vice President of the Rialto Education Association, and I am here to present our initial proposal to you. May I bring it up?
Please do.
Thank you.
Be happy to accept. Okay, California School Employees Association, CSEA. Here she comes. Welcome.
Good evening, President Martinez, school board. My name is Raquel Torres, and I am President of the California School Employees Association, and I'm here to speak on behalf of some of my members who received the bilingual stipend, and I'm sure, Mr. Martinez, you're aware of this, but we have, our district only has two interpreter translators for our district, and a lot of my members are being asked to perform IEPs, sometimes two, three, four, five, six hours out of the day. And I just want to report out that this is in violation, and our district is in violation for doing this. The school district has given training to members who receive the bilingual stipend for this IEP interpreter/translator book, but this doesn't qualify and certify them to be translators. So I just want to report out to the board that there are three board agendas in here for the special ed program, and my members that are being asked to perform IEPs that aren't qualified are wondering, why cannot, why can't we get more interpreter/translators, and why are we being asked to perform this when they don't feel comfortable? So I just wanted to bring this to your attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Avila, would you look into that, please?
Yes.
Okay, Rialto School Managers Association, I'm sorry, Communication Workers of America. Okay, no comments tonight. Rialto School Managers Association.
They're all out on dates with their spouses.
They had dinner reservations.
Or they'd have to see our risk manager. Okay, comments from the superintendent, Dr. Avila.
Thank you, President Martinez, and once again, Happy Valentine's Day to everyone. They say that on average, men purchase about 75% of the 110 million roses sold in the US at this time every year. And I too have done my part, and I'm doing my part here too, because I love best, and that's working with staff who works with our students. Congratulations to all of the five sweepstakes winners, and a big thank you to the science team that put this together, including Dr. D'Souza, Juanita Chan, Michael Nguyen, Eva Serrato, Julia Bailey, and Tina Brown, and everybody else who collaborated with the staff in order to make this an amazing success this school year. February is Black History Month, and so in the district, we kicked it off with a historic month by holding our DSAC Black History Tribute with attorneys, entrepreneurs, Mr. and Mrs. Gary, and Shawna Albright-Austin, who gave our students plenty of tips for success, and really motivated them on staying focused, keeping their options open, and really to be okay with experiencing failure, but only if you use failure to reinvigorate yourself, learn from your mistakes, and come out on top. We also had President Martinez, who made a wonderful presentation to the kids and encouraged them to get to know themselves so that they can really be able to prepare themselves for options that they have in career. And Mr. Hardy Brown, who made an amazing presentation on the impact of slavery here in our country, and really challenging students to advocate not only for themselves, but for people in general, without, not without regard, but not focusing exclusively on race. And he gave a couple of examples of abolitionists who were white, who were really fighting for, to end slavery, and they didn't focus on the race, but really making connections to each other as human beings. Also, along with President, Vice President Montez and staff, we did get an opportunity on January 9th to inaugurate the reopening of the KC Elementary School Playground. I do want the staff at KC Elementary School, the students and parents to try and understand that, given the way that the structure was damaged, it wasn't a new structure that we were installing at the school, but one that had been vandalized, it was burnt down. And so it goes through a lengthier process with the insurance companies, and trying to figure out what they're going to cover versus what the district is going to need to offset. So we do understand that it took almost a full year for the play structure to be installed and for kids to have access to it, and we understand that that created a lot of pressure on the staff to really have the kids play in alternative areas of the school. But I really do want to thank the staff there at the school for the patience that they exhibited in waiting for the process to kind of go through its natural course, given the nature of the incident that happened there at KC Elementary School. And also, I did have an opportunity to attend one of the most amazing events that I have experienced in my two-and-a-half years in the district, and that was the Rise Conference at the Chavez Huerta PDC last week, where Dr. D'Souza and his team were able to bring, I believe it was close to 500 students from the various elementary schools, middle schools, and high schools to, that served as, middle school and high school really served on panels. The Rise Conference was really structured around STEAM, and it was to introduce the elementary kids to really hands-on experiences and potential career paths. The entire PDC outdoor area and the bistro area were divided into different stations where kids had an opportunity to experience the technology, the STEAM, the drones that were brought. And then many of the kids were able to, the secondary kids were able to sit on panels to present to the elementary kids, and the way that, especially, there's a young man from Cussera Elementary School, who was the most articulate young man, but you could see his message and the passion that he has for STEM, that he was able to really articulate the experience that he went through in order to get to the point where he is. the experience that he went through in order to get to the point where he is right now. But it was really impressive, because it was a real opportunity to see not only the teachers who were present and, and kind of guiding the kids along, and the presenters, and the many experts and partners that Dr. D'Souza and the team were able to bring onboard to interact with our kids, but the energy and the enthusiasm that our kids exhibited during that process was just very heartwarming, and to see that our kids are not only able to do it when we set the standards real high, but set the conditions for them to access different opportunities to, to learn and engage in their education. So again, it's a big shout out to the team who put this together. We'll be having an event in the coming weeks to really acknowledge not only the students, but the staff who put this together. We're going to invite some of the guests that were there with us here to the district office to have a mini exhibition of what they did, so we can have the entire board be given the opportunity to see the amazing activities that took place all of last week at the PDC. And with that team, we also had Ms. Peggy Wheeler, who was really instrumental in making sure that that event was the success that, that it was. And that's all that I have.
Thank you, Superintendent Avila. Student Board Member, Herrera.
Hi. Good evening, everybody. Today, Mr. Luna shared with the leadership team, the proposals, the proposal, sorry, for Myler Farms and the multipurpose room for us. I would like to add on what Leslie said earlier, that our basketball team is four and three today, and we'd like to improve that to five and three this Friday. Today, we won by thirty points, so.
Awesome.
That was a big win for us. I, what I love to, sorry, what I love about Mr. Luna is, he wants us to bring innovative ideas to, to Myler, and I think that's what sets us apart from the other high schools, not just that we're a continuation school. I think we are more than just that, I think we are just a bunch of kids that, not a bunch of kids, a school of kids that really want to make a difference in our lives, and make a huge turnaround in our lives. And, yes, I have the Myler Farms brochure, I'd like to pass that around to the, the board. Yes, and I think, that's it, yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Rayala?
Well, thank you, President Martinez. Tonight, I would like to share with the viewing audience, and our staff, and parents, our community, just a few words on perhaps personal achievements and how they affect others. And to start with, it's, you could say, it's not what we say, it's how we say it. I know you've heard that before, you know, if you've got comments on whatever it may be, just try to find ways to be diplomatic and sensitive, and there's a good chance that you'll make a, a better presentation than flying off the handle. We've all been there before, and you know, that doesn't get us anywhere. You know, if we find happiness early in life, and we embrace it, that gives us a better chance to be positive with others. There's a documentary out that I wanted to share with you, it's called The Secret, in case you haven't seen it, it's on Netflix. It's not really a movie, but it's, you know, sharing some perspectives in life, and in a nutshell, it's, it's being positive, being as positive as you can, even when, when it becomes very difficult. Because we all have dreams, we all have aspirations, and we want to help our kids to achieve their, their dreams and their aspirations. But by being good role models, that will increase everyone's chances at, at achieving. And putting things in perspective, what's important, I think it's good to review it once in a while. People need to be fed. You're, you're not going to be happy if you don't eat, so you got to eat. You need a roof over your head. Doesn't have to be fancy, but it has to shelter you from the elements. Person needs love in their life. You have love in your life, you've, you've got the world. And it gets a little more sophisticated, it moves into self-esteem. So you got to feel good about yourself, you got to feel like you're making a contribution. If you're a parent, find ways to help your kids feel good about themselves. It could be as simple as teaching them how to make a tortilla, but a good one, where everybody says, ooh, that was good, that was special. You'd be surprised, when you feel special, how far that will go. What we're trying to do here is get people to achieve early in life. The people that achieve early in life have, make some of the biggest contributions to our society. Typically, the people that achieve early are sports figures, musicians, movie stars. Nowadays, it's, hate to say the word, but nerds in technology, okay? But whoever you may be, or wherever your, wherever your talents are, find ways to be self-actuated, because that's where we're, that's where we want to head. When you become self-actuated, you have all your needs met, and that's where we want our society. Because when all your needs are met, now you have room to start to give. And when you give, now you take yourself to that highest level that you can be. I want to thank you for the opportunity, just to share a few words, I always come across with something that I want to share, and go out there and find ways to be happy, embrace it, and don't lose it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rayala. Ms. Walker?
Good evening. I just wanted to bring some kind of updates on a couple of events I had a chance to participate in, in the district. And the first one was my, at Trap Elementary, my daughter actually graduated from the Girls' Talk Program at Trap Elementary. And so the staff didn't realize, when I got there, they thought I was there as a board member, and they're like, oh, Ms. Walker, you need a seat, you do, you know, all this kind of stuff, and I'm running, and I then realized, they're like, oh, that's Inzinga's mother. And so it was really interesting, and so the kids too, just to say that, oh, why does your, why are they doing all this stuff for your mom, you know, and everything? And then they're like, oh, because I'm not just she, Inzinga's mom, right? But it was exciting, because the girls and the boys, they actually had a boys' council graduating the same day, and just sharing about how that intervention, that social support, really helped the young people. So the kids were able to talk about, literally specifically, they talked about how this helped them, whether it be in class, or at home, or out on the playground, as one of the young men said, that it really helped him with being able to play better on the playground. And for my daughter in particular, just having a camaraderie of young women and being able to talk about that. And so I say that to say again, about the interventions that we actually support and, and to give to our students, so that we actually work with them and support them holistically. So it was a great opportunity to see that again. I was there at, at the Girls' Talk Program at Rialto High School, and I found out also on that same day, that we're losing one of the coordinators, the, who actually implemented the program in the district. So we've lost her now to Upland Unified School District, but I'm hoping that her replacement is going to be somebody who is engaging, who's worked with our, our staff and our students, and the program will be very successful. So that was it, that was Trap's Girl Talk Program. The other thing is that I was also able to go to Trap's Bring a Parent, Bring a Parent to School Day, which was phenomenal. All the kids were out, and they had activities, it was a pep rally, you know, at the morning, and that was the most parents I've ever seen at any parent event, really, okay? At that time of morning, it wasn't back to school night. And so it was really encour, yeah, seriously, it was really encouraging, because these were all mostly parents, they're not just bringing the kids for back to school night. So I, I'm applauding the principal there, Ms. Dominguez, for the reach out and getting the, the buy-in from the families. At the event, she was able to share our outcomes on the dashboard for our district, but then also with the students, and talk about what are the, some of the programs and, and interventions they had at the school. And parents often didn't know, you know, that the school, you know, we had, we're having, you know, some challenges. But what the great opportunity was, is that every parent got to go back to the students' classroom and look at their test scores, and look at their, their attendance reports, and actually sit down with their child, look at those scores, sit down with their child and make a plan, set some goals around what their academic successes would be, their goals, and their behavior, and their attendance for my child. And I found out that my kid has gotten to school, to class thirty minutes later than when school rang. And we're trying to figure out, well, we drop you off in the parking lot. Well, it turns out, she, she travels all around this building to get to class, it's taken like twenty minutes to get to, yeah, she's just sashaying around. We would, I would have never have known that had I not went there, so, just making that plan. It was a great opportunity. So I also found out that she wasn't the first one to do it, the parent, Bring a Parent to Day, to School Day, Robin McMillan at Preston Elementary. And thank you, Dr. Bruce, for, I heard that you were the person who said, hey, let's replicate this, teach the others, and, you know, kind of a modeling from there, so thank you for doing that. Because when we have good practices, definitely we want to share them and, and model that behavior. So what I saw at, at Trap was excellent, I was like, oh my God, this is the bomb, you know? Saeda was there taking pictures, many of the dash, district staff was there, so it was really cool for the parents and the students to see that participation and buy-in. What I want to stress about that was, her day was great at Trap. The fact that we were able to utilize an expertise within our own district and then replicate it was even better. So whether you're the creator or the innovator, these are all things that happen in the district that are good and great for our district and those models. And so thank you for the staff for sharing that, and then giving that opportunity for students and parents to work together on their academic plans as well. And so lastly, just a reminder, for those of you who do not know, on February twenty-sixth, the district is actually having a, with the District African American Parents Advisory Council, will be having their annual African American Black History Month celebration. It'll be at Carter High School at six o'clock, there will be break, um, excuse me, not breakfast, that I'm thinking about. I'm missing Valentine's Dinner tonight, I get a breakfast tomorrow. So I'm already home tomorrow. So it'll be at six o'clock at Carter High School, there'll be dinner for the families, as well as celebration, and the emphasis is actually on African American contributions in STEAM. So please come out and celebrate with the families and the awardees, because they'll be giving students certificates for all the students who got As and Bs in science and mathematics over the last quarter, so that'll be really exciting. February sixth, again, at Carter High School.
Six, or twenty-sixth?
February twenty-sixth, at six P.M.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Clerk O'Kelly?
Yes. Hello, everyone. Thank you for coming on Valentine's Day. I have to say, I was not only lucky enough to receive roses today, I am wearing roses today, so I am representing. Oh, I want to congratulate the sweepstakes winners for the science fair, that's a massive accomplishment, and very proud of them. And Myler Farms looks amazing, are you going to sell those fresh fruits and vegetables?
I'm not sure.
Okay. Well, if you do, let us know.
I will.
I, I think I mentioned this before, but I just saw the, a video on Facebook a couple days ago, I want to congratulate Cussera Middle School for their moment of good recognition by, which was sponsored by Walmart and Cheerios. The STEM students in, at Cussera created an amazing Rube Goldberg machine. If you don't know what a Rube Goldberg machine is, it's phenomenal, and they're really crazy looking machines, but they accomplish very specific goals, it takes a lot of imagination and a lot of creativity to make them, and they showed the machine, and they operated it, and it was amazing. So what this, what happened was, they were the winners of this moment of good recognition, and so Cussera got, the kids got a, or the school got a lot of, they said dozens of technology gifts, all different kinds of technology. The school received a check for five thousand dollars, and the students who created the Rube Goldberg machine have the opportunity to appear on the Ellen Show, so we'll have to keep you posted if they actually appear or not, and we can watch them. So congratulations to Cussera. I also want to congratulate Garcia Elementary School for their impressive accomplishment, this is so cute. The principal, Ramona Rodriguez, and the assistant principal, Lance Riley, challenged their students at the beginning of the year to read twenty million words in their Footsteps to Brilliance program. And they promised them, if they did that, they would be, they would get slimed in front of the whole school, so the kids could watch. Well, that was apparently great motivation for the kids, because they were supposed to read twenty million words by the end of the year, and they did this halfway through the year. Twenty million words was pretty impressive. So Ms. Rodriguez made the slime out of applesauce and pudding, and I don't know what else, it was green. And she and the assistant principal sat up on the stage, and they dumped the slime over their heads, and the kids were losing it, they were, they were, the whole school was in the cafeteria, they're all seated on the floor watching them get slimed, and they just loved it, they had a great time. The video is on the district webpage, so if you haven't seen it, look at it, it's really fun. And I also want to mention that Principal Rodriguez is also going to be honored by CABE, the California Association of Bilingual Education, as Administrator of the Year in their upcoming dinner, I think it's next month sometime, so we want to say congratulations to Mrs. Rodriguez. I also wanted to mention the science fair, I haven't missed a science fair since I've been on the board, and I have to say, I, I looked at pictures and watched the video online, the projects are just amazing. Our science fair continues to be an outstanding display of our students' creativity and curiosity, the topics they select to do their projects on are just mind-blowing. They're very complex and thought-provoking, and I want to give a big thank you and congratulations to Dr. Ed D'Souza and Juanita Chan for doing an outstanding job of organizing the science fair and the awards ceremony. And sadly, I, I forgot to put the science fair on my calendar, so I did not get there, because it wasn't on my calendar, I do not know why. But I haven't missed one since I got on the board, and I hopefully will not miss anymore. But I did see pictures and heard from parents about how great it was. And that's all. I hope you all have a very happy rest of your Valentine's Day.
Vice President Montez?
Thank you, Board President, Mr. Martinez. Again, I want to welcome everybody here tonight, we know tonight's a special day for many of you lovebirds out there, and new and old couples. New and old. So again, thank you for being here tonight. I want to thank the students, I want to thank Ms. Silva, I'm guessing these are from Ms. Silva, because Ms. Silva was carrying a bag of these earlier. Whoever they're from, whoever they're from, thank you very much. The students that brought us the Valentine's cards, that was really sweet of them, thank you very much. I want to just piggyback on what Dr. Avila was saying in regards to the KC Elementary Playground renewal. It's a state-of-the-art, I, I did take a little time from my workday to go down there and, and just share, share in that special moment with the students there. It's a state-of-the-art playground, it took, it seems like an eternity to get it, and the reason why the students and the parents were concerned, and the staff, was because for almost a year, they had to look at every single day, every time they went into the outside, for recess, for everything, they would see this destroyed, ghost town-looking, burnt and charred and melted playground, which was starting to take a toll on them every time they came out, all the green grass, the nice asphalt, the, the citrus grove, and then the big burned-down playground on the side. So we were thankful that everyone was patient, we explained to them, Superintendent, Mr. Islam explained to them, it was an insurance issue, it was a manufacturing delay, and we finally got it open for them, and they were just ecstatic, very happy. If I wouldn't have been wearing jeans, I would have wanted to go down that slide, it just looked really, really fun. So I'm sure they're enjoying it. Big thank you to the board. Um, big thank you to the board, uh, and everybody, uh, who made that possible. I want to also, um, I want to thank, uh, Mr. Islam, uh, for, uh, recommending to the superintendent and to the board that, uh, we hired a, and we did, we approved, uh, the hiring of a consultant to help, uh, the Nutrition Services Department with, uh, some, um, with, um, Samaridin, and, um, uh, just as an extra measure, uh, superintendent and, uh, I know members of this board, and Mr. Islam were concerned that without, um, the, uh, former, um, Nutrition Services Director being on a, uh, taking a long, um, vacation, uh, before retirement, that there might have been some issues. And, uh, I want to, um, thank, uh, Mr. Islam, and we should give him a round of applause for making sure that the staff had the support that they needed, uh, for that. And I especially want to thank Mrs. Fawcett and her, uh, her leadership for really pulling through, um, and making sure that, uh, Nutrition Services...
I didn't know, I just like, you tell, you walk up, money from father, what you think, we'll be there, so I would like to do this today.
Okay. And the reason why I'm so thankful to, to Mr. Islam and to Fawcett and her team, the reason why I'm so thankful is because we received notice from, uh, the lead reviewer from the Nutrition Services Division of the California Department of Education, uh, reported that the district had a very positive review, and she and her team were very impressed with Nutrition Services staff and program. Um, there were no physical sanctions, and, um, currently, um, we are awaiting final official report from the CDE. So, I just, even though we haven't got the official report, we got really good news. So, that's why I'm so happy, and I want, and I, and I believe all of you guys deserve a round of applause for, for making sure that, that that happens. So, 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 thank you, thank you. Um, I also want to share that, um, we, the district received, and, and, um, in case you guys haven't heard, the district received, I think we might have talked about it already, but in case, I'm going to throw it out there again, um, the district received a total of ten electrical buses.
Mm-hmm.
Grants for approximately five million dollars. Eight of those buses were awarded from a grant by the U.S. Department of Energy, um, and two special needs electrical buses, um, from the Southern California Air Quality Management District, uh, for a grant of almost a million dollars. And, um, and we've got a bunch of other things, very, very positive, good things going on. Really, Mr. Islam should be reading all this stuff, but in case you guys didn't know, I wanted to share that with you. Um, the Eisenhower updates, Mrs. O'Kelly, you should be sharing this.
The HVAC is done. Every room now has air conditioning.
Heating, ventilation, air conditioning upgrade is complete. Um, and, uh, the stadium is projected to be completed by the end of February, this, this month, and the Performing Arts Theater is projected to be completed by the end of August two thousand and eighteen. So, uh, finally, finally, Mrs. O'Kelly, Eisenhower students, including my kids, and all the community of the district, can finally, uh, uh, have our ribbon-cutting ceremonies, uh, go out and onto that beautiful, brand-new, state-of-the-art, uh...
If you have not seen the stadium, it's amazing. I mean, it's gorgeous.
Four, three, is it four years in the, three years in the making? How long did that take?
Three years.
Three years, three years in the making. Three years in the making, finally. As a matter of fact, the, the, uh, the, three years ago, uh, names are still on that, uh, billboard up there, and, um, and finally, we'll be opening shops. So, thank you, Mr. Islam, Superintendent, Board, District Leadership, Measure Y, and all of the, uh, people in this community that believed in this district to make sure we had enough tax dollars to renew, uh, all of those projects for, for the students. And, um, last but not least, I just want to, um, uh, remind everyone that, uh, not only is it Valentine's Day, but it's still also, uh, Black History Month, and, um, Mr., uh, Dr. Avila mentioned that, um, County School Board member, Hardy Brown, Jr., um, uh, gave, gave some, uh, gave a workshop on, uh, on some U.S. history regarding slavery, and I just wanted to share that, um, I read an article, um, from, from, uh, I believe it was, uh, The Nation, um, regarding some university professors speaking about the importance of really taking a look at our U.S. history books at the, at the public education, and really making sure that the, the whole side of the story is told when it comes to slavery. Um, it's an ugly past, it's a, uh, part of our history, um, that not too many people are proud of, uh, very shameful, very hurtful to many people, um, very atrocious things happen, but regardless, it's part of our history as a country, as a people, as, as this part of the world, and it's important that our students learn it the way it, it should be told, from all sides, not just from, not just from, you know, one side, but from all sides. And, and people believe that, educators believe that, by teaching, by letting the kids learn all aspects of that, that shameful history can help us move forward, uh, especially with a lot of, you know, uh, right now, the animosity amongst different sides and different, different people at this time in our country. Uh, learning about, um, that history can help us heal and help us move forward and help us understand each other a little bit better, but that's not going to happen if all we learn about is, you know, is just one chapter worth of, um, information, or whatnot, or worse, inaccurate information. Um, so, I just wanted to share that, because Dr. Avila brought it up, but, um, again, um, uh, I couldn't make it to, um, the, um, university conference, uh, for, um, the Breakfast University Conference they had for, uh, Dr. King, but I did see in, uh, Dr. Avila's office, um, uh, like a, like a, um, uh, what is it, a, um...
It's a plaque, a frame.
It's a frame of Dr. King, and one of my favorite quotes from him of all time, one of my favorite quotes, period, um, you know it by heart?
I do not.
Mr. McDuffie does.
I knew he was going to do that.
The ultimate measure of man is not, uh, where he stands in times of comfort and convenience, but where he stands in times of challenge and controversy.
Ooh!
Very nice.
Very nice. Very good. And I wasn't picking on him, he told me he liked that quote too, so that's why I figured he must know it.
Oh, boy.
Um, so, thank, thank you for that, and, and again, um, I don't want to keep rambling on, it's, uh, Valentine's Day and it's eight P.M. Uh, President Martinez, take it away.
Thank you, Vice President Montez. Um, you know, the board can stop asking, are we there yet, for, uh, the IC infrastructure updates? It's nice to know it's on the horizon. Um, my report consists of, basically, today we, the board was presented with the strategic plan update. What really strikes me is it, it is very student, student-centric. Um, based upon that, you know that I report out on, on technical ed, STEM, that kind of thing, and I'm going to continue. Uh, five of the hardest manufacturing jobs to fill nationwide. Mechanical engineering technician, CNC machine tool operator, machinist, electronics assembler, and welder. Locally, and I mean LA, most scarce skills in Los Angeles. IT, infrastructure and systems management, healthcare management, sales, other human resources, Microsoft Windows systems, education and teaching, database management and software, human resource recruiting, lean manufacturing and quality management, general finance, that's from LinkedIn. And if we are supposed to train our students for that, I am calling on us to up our game for teachers. And basically, ISTI, which is the International Society of Technical Educators, has developed, um, a strategy and standards that I've handed to Dr. Avila to look over. Um, separately, I came across these seven educator standards on, online, I believe it was, uh, educator something or other, uh, one of the, the Twitter feeds that I follow. One, learner. Educators continually improve their practice by learning from and with others and exploring proven and promised practices that leverage technology to improve student learning. Two, leader. Educators seek out opportunities for leadership to support student empowerment and success and improve teaching and learning. Citizen. Educators inspire students to positively contribute to and responsibly participate in the digital world. Collaborator. Educators dedicate time to collaborate with both colleagues and students to improve practice, discover and share resources and ideas, and solve problems. Designer. Educators design authentic, learner-driven activities and environments that recognize and accommodate learner variability. Facilitator. Educators facilitate learning with technology to support student achievement. And footnote, uh, the ISTI standards for students of two thousand and sixteen, which I've given to Dr. Avila. Seven, analyst. Educators understand and use data to drive their instruction and support students in achieving their learning goals. Then it points to the ISTI website, which is, uh, it's not given here, but this came off EdTech's event, um, I'm sorry, EdTech's page. That is where we are going, where we must go to meet the goals our students are challenged with, uh, not just now, but in the future. We've come a long way, but we're not yet at the tipping point. So, everyone that I know does not like change, and the old phrase that I've shared with Dr. Avila, "Change is hard." And we could make a different claim that is every bit as accurate. This is our new phrase. Adaptation is the rule of human existence, not the exception. Adaptation is the rule of human existence, not the e- exception. So, the strategic plan will drive us there. It, it doesn't get down to a, a teacher will do this or will do that, it just says a student will be taught, and it specifies. But what they have to be taught, it has taken, well, since nineteen eighty, basically, computers came in in the seventies, they were around from the early forties in con- concept, um, and if you go back, other than digital, you go back further, they, they were around in one manner or another. But our, our kids need to, as I read, they need to be prepared for jobs that are existing today, and they're supposed to be learning it from us. I am not going to let, and this board will not let Rialto fail to educate our students appropriately, so they can be good citizens. So, that concludes my comments. Let's get on with the board agenda. Public hearing. D, public information. The Williams Settlement Legislation Quarterly Uniform Complaint Report Summary covering October through December is in this agenda, it's referenced D one point one. Going to go over there real quick, so I can share that they are all zeros, that everything is covered. Even if it's at the last minute, we have a crew that goes around, and they make sure that it is, is taken care of. And, uh, kudos to the maintenance crew that does that, which falls again under Mr. Islam. Thank you, Mohammed. Okay, our consent calendar items. All items of the consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless pulled by Board of Education members or the superintendent for individual action. And this is to approve consent items referenced E through J. I need a motion in a second.
So, moved?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, do we have any polls or any discussion questions? Ms. O'Kelly?
I have a question, uh, about number fifteen.
Uh, which fifteen?
H fifteen.
Okay.
The only fifteen there is.
Okay. For the record. Please, go ahead.
Okay, well, uh, do you want to approve the rest of them?
Uh, if, if you go ahead and do that, do you have more than this? Let, let's do this, and then we can approve them all.
Okay. Okay, well, my question is this. I noticed, uh, that we are approving an agreement with Valdez Educational Services with six of our schools. I don't recall ever hearing of Valdez Educational Services, and, um, I noticed in years past, we usually had numerous, um, companies that we were contracting with. So, is there a particular reason why we're doing six schools with one company?
So, if you look at last year, it was catapulted, and I think what we found is, um, we weren't getting bang for a buck with that partnership. So, what's changed is even the funding, it's now going, um, to the school site, we have, um, now variety in terms of sites picking what is the best fit for them. Ties a lot in with our discussion about the strategic plan and the principal kind of owning it. So, we have the, the benefit of, uh, you know, Carol, who's now in Categoricals, a kind of a wealth of experience in what she did, she vetted quite a few, um, and so, I know right now, we've got a Better Tomorrow is a Choice for Principals with their staff.
Right.
Um, Leading Edge, Sylvan Learning Center, and then Valdez Educational Services. So, there's a menu, and our sites, I think, are picking what they think is the best fit for, um, their students at the site and working with their teachers.
Well, the thing is, first of all, when I looked up, uh, Valdez, I kept getting, um, refer, first of all, it doesn't have its own website, which I find very strange, because the other companies have these big, nice, beautiful websites. This has a Facebook page with hardly anything on it except a picture of a skating rink, I guess they took kids to a skating party. So, what kind of company does not have, like, any public information about it?
I'm going to go ahead and defer to Carol at this point, so thank you, Carol.
Hi, good evening.
Welcome.
Hi, good evening, I'm Carol Mahatchko, I'm, uh, agent for Special Programs. Um, some of the vetting with the companies, these were companies that actually had a good track record, um, with the SES tutoring. SES no longer exists, and part of ESA, we have to provide alternative support services. Um, my understanding, Valdez, the owner and the founder of the company actually used to work with a larger company that had a very strong reputation, and he broke off with some of the employees from that company when they dissolved after SES stopped. So, these companies were, again, were vetted because they had a good track record, the people that were doing the tutoring. Um, Valdez uses the iReady program and the, uh, lessons, so it's compatible with, um, some of the things that we're already doing within district. Um, we didn't necessarily tell the principals which options to choose, because they also could choose an option to have their own teachers do tutoring, and we have several sites doing that as well. So, some of the principals actually met with the consultants and to see if they could make a fit with either some kind of program to extend what they were doing already. Um, and again, some, many chose Valdez, again, I think because some of the connection with iReady and some of the lessons and things that they were going to do.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is that it, Ms. O'Kelly?
Yeah.
Okay, good, good. All right, uh, board, let's see. Over on H nine is where the vote got moved to, just above K. Okay, preferential vote by student board member?
Aye.
And vote by board members?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. And it is such a long agenda tonight, but we are going into closed session again. Okay, discussion...
We only have one more question.
Yes?
We only have one more question.
Okay.
That's the end of the agenda.
Okay. Uh, discussion action items, and a motion in a second on K one, please.
You want to read it?
Well, after it's motioned and seconded.
Motion?
Second, please.
Second?
Thank you. And K... And K-1 is approved, changing the Wednesday, March 14th Board of Education meeting to Wednesday, March 7th, 2018. Questions, comments? Dr. Avila, why is a change needed?
So, each year, we look for different conferences that district personnel traditionally attends. The calendars, when we approved last year, are not always available by certain conferences. So, CASA, the California Association of African-American School Administrators, is during that same week, and we do have a team, including myself and board members, who choose to go attend. So, that's the reason, the primary reason for that.
Okay, excellent reason.
It's a very good reason. Next year, please don't schedule Valentine's Day.
I think we're all in trouble on that one. All right, board, vote by board members.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, we have to go back into closed session before we can--
No, we need to do number two and--
And we can't do number two because we haven't discussed it in closed session.
Oh, that's right. Okay.
Okay, so, between K-1 and K-2, we have to take a motion and a second to move into closed session.
I move, that we move into closed session?
Second.
Thank you. Vote by board members to move into closed session.
Aye. Before we do--
Yes, sir.
I just would like to suggest, if it's okay with the board, a student board member might not want to wait for us--
Yes, please.
--come out from close.
Excellent.
And if the board would like to excuse--
You're welcome to go home and do your homework, or--
Okay.
Go home and eat Valentine's.
Call your Valentine.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, vote by board members.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.[716.16]
cookies here.
When I come here though, because I love those cookies.
Remember we ate the bread and you gave us all of them.
Oh, we haven't had those for about three months now. We got chocolate peanut butter and snickerdoodle. Oh, and sometimes chocolate chip. We don't get chocolate chip much either.
I knew you were taking care of us.
That's how rotten your bread last year. Oh yeah, do everybody. Thank you. Oh, I was like, what happened to the president?
This president is starting to nod off. Irregardless of all the Starbucks. Okay, here we go. Okay, we are back. It's 9:42. I need a motion in a second to adjourn closed session.
Don't we have to vote on these expulsions?
You're right.
We skipped that out.
You're absolutely right. In open session. Thank you, Ms. O'Kelly. We are on page nine, K2. Approve the recommendations of administrative hearing panel. And in that, we have to pull. Got to get that item. Case number 171825. Pull 171825. Other than that, everything else remains on there for K2. I need a motion in second, please.
So moved.
Wait a minute, we need to reconvene. We need a motion in second to reconvene. Open session.
Okay.
Close, close session.
Close, close session.
Yeah. All right. Here we go. And I thought I had it all together.
I made a motion that we close.
Closed session. And we have a second. Okay, vote by board members.
Aye.
Okay, now.
We have a report out of closed session.
Yes, thank you very much. Report out of closed session.
We have several. The first, the Board of Education accepted the administrative appointment of Adam Wagner, Agent Child Welfare and Attendants. The roll call vote was unanimous. The Board of Education accepted the voluntary mid-year reassignment agreement by and between the district and certificated employee number 1695428. The roll call vote was unanimous. Am I missing one report? Leave of absence?
Are we off the air?
No, I believe it's dead air. I'll report on my Valentine's. Roses are red, violets are blue, STEM is cool, and so are you.
The Board of Education denied the request for leave of absence extension for classified employee number 1024238, February 2018 through May 31st, 2018. The roll call vote was unanimous. And the Board of Education voted to approve existing litigation case number 17-18-01. The roll call vote was unanimous.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Avila. Okay, open session is reconvened at 9:45. Let's see here. Let's go to page nine, board. And now I believe we are good for K2. A motion in a second to approve the recommendations of the administrative hearing panel.
With the exception of.
Thank you. Of, we are pulling 171825. Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. And vote by board members.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. The next regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Royal to Unified School District will be held on Wednesday. Is that right? February 28th?
No. Oh, yes. The next meeting.
Fourteen days from today.
It is getting late. At 7:00 PM at the Dr. John R. Casalunas Education Center, 182 East Walnut Avenue. Again, that's February 28th, 7:00 PM. Materials distributed or represented or presented to the Board of Education at the Board of Education meeting are available upon request from the superintendent's office. We do not have a student board member, so I need a first motion in a second for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
You didn't jump in.
He's slow on it, right?
Me too. Vote by board members.
Aye.
Aye. And we are adjourned at 9:47. Thank you, everybody.